For Tuesday, September 23rd. Going to get started with Ways and Means Supervisor Parte.
Mr. Chairman, we'll go to the center.
Who am I? I'm missing someone. Where's? Okay. Yeah. Does he come? Amanda, did you what? Everybody? Well, even though he's not here, I'm going to call the meeting to order. So, issue number one. We have Drescher and Malachi here who is going, who are here to review the 2024 audit for Seneca County. And every supervisor should have a copy of the presentation on their desk, I believe.
Introducing Erica Hanley from Drescher and Malachi for the 2024 audit. Handouts have been provided.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. As mentioned, I'm here to present to you the results of the December 31st, 2024 audit. My name is Erica Hanley. I'm a Director with Drescher and Malachi. Where we stand right now with the audit, we do have draft financial statements. Your deadline for issuing your federal single audit is September 30th. We're definitely in a place that we will issue by September 30th. We're just finishing up some small items with Julie. We have a call with her tomorrow to iron out some of the last items. But there's no concern about ensuring issuance by September 30th to be in compliance with the federal single audit submission. In front of you have a presentation that I'll go through today. If you have any questions at any point, please feel free to jump in. On the first slide, the products of our audit. What we were hired to do as your external auditors. First and foremost, we're hired to issue an opinion on the basic financial statements. The financial statements and everything within them is owned by management. We receive all of the information and then compile the financial statements. The only thing within that document that we take ownership over is the opinion on the financial statements. Everything else comes directly from management, from finance. As I mentioned, those are in draft form. However, we do anticipate moving forward with what's referred to as an unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion, and that's the best that you can do from an audit perspective. We also issue what's referred to as an opinion on the single audit because of the amount of federal money that's spent within the county each year. You are required by the federal government to have what's referred to as a single audit performed. This is a compliance audit over federal spending. This year, we tested five different pockets of money. We do that on a rotational basis. Guidance is given to us by the federal government. This year, there were five programs tested. Those are your airport improvement funds. Excuse me, social services block grant, medical assistance program, supplemental nutrition, and the fifth is the American Rescue Plan. So, we do a lot of testing over that fund, those funding, and had no issues as a result. So, no compliance findings as a result of that audit. We also issue what's referred to as an auditor communication letter. I'll go through that on the next slide a bit more. And then we also issue an opinion, excuse me, a management letter. This is a letter for us to give an opportunity to share certain best practices, future accounting pronouncements that will affect the county. Those have been discussed with management. And then lastly, we issue an opinion on the New York State Department of Transportation, similar to that federal award that is a compliance audit that we do over your Department of Transportation funding from New York State. We had no issues as a result of that audit. So, really from, you know, all those boxes that you're looking to check, you were able to, no compliance findings, no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses, and that unmodified or clean opinion. So, all good news from that front. Moving on to the next slide, as I mentioned, we issue what's referred to as an auditor communication letter. This is a standard letter issued every year that has certain required communications. These include what our responsibility is under generally accepted auditing standards. Our responsibility as your external independent auditors is to plan and perform an audit to obtain reasonable assurance over the financial statements. We were able to achieve that through that unmodified opinion from the testing that we've performed. Significant accounting policies are included in footnote one to the financial statements for purposes of this communication. There was really only one change to the financial statements. The county was required to implement Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 101. So, that's a statement that all municipalities throughout the country, everyone who follows GASB was required to adopt this year. It had a small impact on your compensated absences liability. That's your liability for sick and vacation time of your employees. It really, the goal of that GASB was to kind of standardize how that liability was calculated across municipalities. It does not affect how you fund those. It does not affect how you calculate them. It does not affect how your fund balance looks. It's a government-wide item only, so it doesn't really impact any of the bookkeeping for that. On the backside, all that information was kept by finance and HR. We just had to request a couple of different reports, and that is implemented in this year's financial statement. Significant accounting estimates. Your financial statements do include significant estimates. That's not uncommon. Our responsibility is to evaluate what the inputs are for those estimates. We have determined that the inputs are reasonable and the estimates can be relied upon. For your information, those estimates include your compensated absences liability, which I mentioned, the net pension liability. That's the New York State retirement liability. That information comes directly from New York State. Your workers' compensation liability. This year, a third-party actuary performed that evaluation. We evaluated those inputs and determined that they were reasonable. Independence, probably the most important thing that you're looking for in an external audit. Everybody in our firm has signed off as being independent of the county. And then any other matters. Had there been anything else to communicate with you, I would hear. We had no disagreements with anyone that we came in contact with. Full cooperation, full access to the books and records. We appreciate all the help we get from Caitlin and Julie and finance, as well as their team and all the departments that we have contact with. Moving on to the financial statement update. Slide four. This presents a five-year trend of your general fund, revenues and other financing sources, which are the blue line versus your expenditures and other financing uses. So, I'll walk you through some of the results of the December 31st year. And we like to say an audit, of course, is a look back. So, all this information has been shared with you throughout the year by Julie and the finance department. We're here to provide that opinion on the information. This year, your revenues had a slight increase of about $2.3 million. Those amounted to overall $83 million in the general fund, coming in just underneath your expenditures, which had an increase to $85.5 million. Fund balance overall in the general fund had a decrease of about $2.4 million. On the revenue side of things, that increase in revenue was really driven by increases in state aid, federal aid, and departmental income. Those relate to daycare programs, childcare programs, some of the mental health clinics. And on the expenditure side of things, expenditures increased by about $5.3 million. As those revenues increased, so do your expenses to sustain those programs. So, economic assistance and opportunity, health spending did increase as well related to those programs. In addition, your transfers out of the general fund had a slight increase this year. Those transfers helped sustain some of the county road programs, airport, the community development fund this year, as well as your self-insurance programs. Overall, fund balance in the general fund again had that slight decrease, amounting to total fund balance of about $35.5 million. On the next slide, this is a just different way to show that previous graph. It's the ratio of revenues and transfers into expenditures and transfers out in the general fund. We like to look at this over a period of time. Most generally speaking, the goal of a government is to be raising enough money to sustain operations and to reinvest in the county. So, we like to see an average close to one to show that, you know, of course, some years there's going to be some increases, and some years there's going to be overall decreases in fund balance. Your five-year average is 1.04, so just about as close to one as you can get there. So, of course, those COVID years had some higher revenues, lower spending in them. That levels off a bit in the current year, which is a trend that we've seen across the state. Moving on to the next slide, your general fund fund balance trends. This takes the total fund balance each year in the general fund and categorizes it into the different groups. As previously mentioned, total fund balance in the general fund this year amounted to $35.5 million. Of that, that red section there, $23.3 million, represents non-spendable fund balance, restricted fund balance, and assigned fund balance. So, some of those categories of fund balance that are legal reserves, your non-spendable fund balance, that's a fund balance that represents prepaid, so those balances can't be touched either leaving your unassigned fund balance or that blue section coming in about $12 million, $12,175,000. So, you can see there a slight decrease in the unassigned fund balance compared to the prior year. And looking at your fund balance policy, the goal there is to have that newly adopted policy is to have about 13% to 16% of unassigned fund balance as a comparison to the next year's appropriation. You are right, right about 12.8%, so right slightly under that 13%. So, no concerns there. You're getting closer to that number. Looking at the future years, your budgeting practice, you can use that as well to help for future years' budgets. That concludes the formal presentation. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them now. Otherwise, my contact information is on the last slide. If anything comes up over the next few weeks or in the future, I'm happy to answer those.
When will we get the final budget?
The final.
The final. Final audit.
That's okay. Yeah, I know you're working backward, current year and future. By September 30th, no later than that. Possibly beforehand, but by next Tuesday.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Supervisor Parte, can we ask a question?
Sure.
Just on page four.
Sure.
So, can you help me understand? How can we spend more than we bring in?
So, you're spending down on existing fund balance in that?
So, the, oh, so page four is fund balance and not the?
Um, so it, you're looking at the line graph?
Yes.
Yeah. So, you do spend more, this year, there was a spend down of existing fund balance. So, last.
Okay. That's why I misunderstood. So, that refers to fund balance.
Well, those are your revenues and expenses.
Yes.
But over, as a result, your fund balance would decrease. So, you're not starting, you're starting at?
By that two million.
Beginning of year.
By that 2 million, 2.5 million.
Yes.
Okay. I follow you. All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Issue number two. We have a ClearGov presentation. Do we need to move? Are we going to be in the way?
He's one of our key guys. I think we're speaking.
The projection comes from there. Who's presenting? Julie, is someone, are you in?
Are you going to be in the way? We should be okay.
While we're connecting, I'll just do a quick introduction. So, we're going to be connecting to Rob Betaglia from ClearGov. They have a digital budget book software that we're interested in looking at, and that's the presentation that he was going to connect with.
Are they presenting remotely?
It is the handout that you have, the blue handout.
Oh, Julie, want to?
Sure. Thanks.
Thank you.
Except I need one.
This is Rob. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Hi, Rob, this is Julie. I have the Ways and Means Committee and our board present, and you're connected on the screen. They also have a printout in front of them.
Perfect. Well, thank you all so much for allowing me to present this evening. As Julie said, my name is Rob Betaglia. I am a Senior Solutions Advisor with ClearGov. For those who might not be familiar with our company, we are the leading provider of cloud-based budgeting solutions for local governments across the country. We're currently working nearly 1,400 different local government entities across the country. In terms of counties, nearly 300 different county governments are using our software. We're also proud to be endorsed by both the National Association of Counties and the New York State Association of Counties, which we are not only endorsed by them, but we work with them from a partnership perspective as well. In terms of our county users across New York State, 20 different counties across the state are using our software, including some counties nearby like Ontario County, Livingston County, Chamon County, Oswego County, Allegheny County, Madison County, to name a few. And really where we're coming at this from is talking with finance teams all across the state, all across the country. It sounds like Seneca County's budget process is similar to that to most communities, which is it's a hodgepodge of, you know, accounting system modules like Munis, maybe some spreadsheets. And then the final result is usually a budget presentation that is a PDF that maybe leaves something to the imagination. And with the budget being the most important story and document you're producing all year, we here at ClearGov believe there's a more modern approach to the annual budget cycle. What we have designed is a budget cycle management suite with a handful of different modules for each unique aspect of the budget process. So, we offer tools around planning and tracking, developing the budget, reporting on the budget, transparency. All of these different modules are designed to complement your Munis accounting system. So, the finance team is going to continue to use Munis for everything the county's using Munis for today. Think of ClearGov as a bolt-on to Munis, a complementary system on top of Munis in the cloud. We have a Munis interface, so these two solutions are able to talk to each other very easily out of the box. As Julie said, the module that the county's currently looking at is our digital budget book software, which is really designed to do three things for the county's budget process. Number one, it's going to save a ton of time in producing your budget reports. But instead of getting the same type of reports you're getting today, which are mostly Munis printouts, maybe with very few charts and graphs and narrative detail, our system's going to automate the most professional type of budget document possible, lots of charts and graphs and narrative detail. It's also going to, number two, produce your budget in a digital, interactive, website-based format that's mobile-friendly, tablet-friendly, ADA-optimized. You'll still be able to get a printed PDF with a professional-looking table of contents and production value, but you get the best of both worlds in 2025, a digital, interactive document as well as that professional PDF. And number three, our system is built around the Government Finance Officer Association's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, which is the national standard for the last 40 years and what a budget document should look like. A couple of counties in New York currently win that award. Counties like Orange County, Sullivan County, they're using our software to achieve that award status. And to show you what we're talking about, I want you all to imagine, moving forward, instead of a budget document and presentation that looks something like this, with our system, you'll be able to have a document that's going to look something like this. So, this here is Chamon County's budget book that's up on their website. This is their 2025 budget. You can just see compared to a static PDF, this is a digital, interactive website-based presentation of the budget. When the finance team goes to create the budget document the first time, number one, they'll have already gone through an onboarding process where the ClearGov team is going to build out your Munis data architecture and historical data into the system. So, when the finance team goes to create the budget book, it's going to have all of Seneca County's historical data and the way its funds and line items report normally. So, from a data perspective, it's going to be similar. And then it'll, you'll have the opportunity to maybe reimagine the way the budget is presented with all of the GFOA best practices. Think of it almost like a coloring book with a bunch of nice templated pages for you and your team to leverage. So, something as simple as, you know, for Chamon County here, we see a budget message letter from the county executive. They have some other nice narrative pages, like a history of the county page. In this case, a budget process timeline page, really nice templates, again, built around all of those industry best practices for you and your team to leverage. One of the things our software can automate is a demographics presentation. The reason we can do this is we actually have an API with the Census Bureau to pull this data forward each year. So, this demographics page that you see here for Chamon County, this is all automated by the ClearGov software every year, full-time population, daytime population, age group distribution. If you're actually curious what this would look like for Seneca County, I can show you real quick. So, this here is your data according to the Census Bureau, full-time population data, daytime population, age group distribution information, household information with benchmark statistics, so the viewer knows what these numbers really mean, economic data, like household income distribution, home value distribution, homeownership versus rentership. So, one of those things that our software can automate and build in that best practice into your budget. But take that aside, this, this type of information presented this way is just going to continue to make the county's budget document and budget process that much more of a powerful policy tool device and communications tool device instead of just a static financial report. From a financial meat-and-potatoes perspective, again, whatever Seneca County's chart of accounts is in Munis, that's what's going to be presented here in ClearGov. We can see for Chamon County, this is their fund structure. They have different pages and different sections for all their different funds. We can see here for the general fund page. The system is automating a lot of data off of the Munis budget data. We can see some charts and graphs that are digital and interactive. All of these are automated by the system the moment the data's inside of it, whether you're looking at this on a screen like right now or on the computer, on a tablet, on a mobile device. With the system, it's going to get a lot of charts and graphs and make it easier for, you know, board members, members of the public to better understand the budget. And again, not only will you have automated charts and graphs, but they'll be interactive, and you can show multiple charts and graphs on top of each other. This digital navigation bar is a really nice, modern take on the traditional table of contents. So, whether you are, again, someone internally or a member of the public trying to drill down into the budget, it makes it easier to find exactly what you're looking for as opposed to flipping through hundreds of pages of PDFs. From a department perspective, the system is going to automate presentations around any aspect of your budget you're trying to create a page around, whether it be a department, a division, an agency. Here we see, this is actually Clinton County now. They are actually a client who has Munis, and they were Seneca County last year. They implemented ClearGov the first time last year, and this was their 2025 budget book. And you can see for this department, it's very clean. It's easy to read. Those trending information around their budget. If I continue to scroll down, in addition to the charts and graphs, you still get that spreadsheet-level detail that you'd expect out of a budget document. You can see here the progression of the different stages of the budget, as well as the, you know, account codes and descriptions, like in any kind of budget document. But in addition to the budget data for each department, you will allow your departments to be able to add in narrative to accompany their budget, missions, descriptions, goals, accomplishments, performance measures, organizational charts. So, we see here for Ulster County, another example, we can see they've added in one of their departments, in this case, it's the county clerk, who the point of contact is, their title, a headshot, a department description, a mission statement for that department, an organizational chart for that department, which all of this can be built into ClearGov. There's spell check, there's grammar check. There are universal formatting tools, so the software can be the graphic designer for the finance team, really streamlining this process to create the most professional document possible. But when you're looking at the data, it's very clean. I can see what this department's budget is compared to last year, again, what that data has been historically. And if I continue to scroll down, not only do I get the charts and graphs to better explain things, but if I want to look at the line item level detail, we can do that as well. One more example here is Orange County, who again is a GFOA budget award winner. This is their HR department. We can see here they have a nice description of that department, some nice budget narrative. We can see all of the data. But what is the budget at the end of the day? The budget represents the services the county's trying to provide. And I have no doubt that if one department is asking for an increase year over year, maybe it's the IT department to replace some workstations. They've asked for a 10% increase. They want to replace a certain amount of workstations. The committee, the board is probably going to want to know year over year, did you meet your goal? Did you exceed your goal? Did you not meet your goal? Why didn't you meet your goal? Being able to report on that performance data right here in the budget, as we can see here for Orange County, is again, not to sound like a broken record, but it's going to make the budget document that much more of a powerful policy tool and communications tool for the county's most important story and document you're producing all year. Finally, this digital, interactive presentation that we're looking at for all these different counties, Chamon County, Clinton County, Orange County, Ulster County, all of these are on the county. Just like I went on Seneca County's website, looked at this budget document, this PDF is linked to the county's website. Each one of these documents is linked to their county's website. So, it's the same process for anyone to access the budget via the county website. But you may have noticed that in addition to the interactive document, there's a big blue print button over here. At any point, anyone internally or with the public can print out this document, they can print out the whole thing or pieces of it, and you'll get a professional-looking PDF that's going to look something like this. With an automated and properly numbered table of contents, that's dynamically linked as well. So, that's our digital budget book software. Again, I appreciate the committee allowing me to present. I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
Any questions? Rob, did you hear that? I think it's in the, I think there's a resolution. But what's it cost?
The software is $15,000 a year. We are prorating the cost of the software for this current fiscal year. So, and there's also a one-time setup fee. So, I believe for the remainder of this fiscal year, I believe the total is $10,325. And then the full annual subscription, which begins January 2026, which I believe the finance team's looking the budget for, and the 26 budget will be $15,000. So, $10,325 for the remainder of this year to use the software, and then $15,000 thereafter.
If we go with this, does the county have the rights to edit it and make it what they want it to be, or do any changes need to go through your company?
No, it's a, all we're providing is a software license and subscription. So, just like, you know, if you were using Microsoft Excel or Word, right? You got a license from Microsoft. It's the same thing here. The finance team's in complete control. The data can be uploaded by the finance team, and then all these templates and all these pages, the finance team is in complete control. You know, we are, we're a software provider. So, the financing can edit everything. They want to change narrative, the data, all of that is in control by the finance team.
Any other questions? Supervisor, Colonel Witter? Julie? What do you think of it?
I liked the presentation. We saw him at a conference earlier this year for NISAC, and so Caitlin and I did a separate review of it. Then I talked to Beth about it, and then we, that's, which is why we're suggesting bringing it forward with this piece of it. There are other pieces of the software that I do like, that we thought this was a good starting point to get in with the budget piece of it to, for that presentation side of it. There's other pieces of it that I know Bob had looked at before. There's, that does the capital improvement plan, the process, so we could build other pieces into this as part of the overall process, and building the budget could actually change with their other pieces of the software.
Beth, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How is the support on it? Because it seems like when we always go to these things.
Yeah.
And people start making calls, and we get no, no answers of how to do things, like with the codes, the one they bought. So, do you have a good support team?
Rob, how's your customer service?
Yeah. So, I think two things. I think number one, you know, the fact that we have both the NACO and NISAC stamp of approval. I think to your point, I'm at every conference. If, if our customer support team wasn't good, I'd be getting yelled at at every time I go to one of these NISAC conferences. But you can see here on the screen what our training and offerings. But you can see here on the screen what our training and offerings are. So number one, the county is going to get assigned an implementation manager, some with a name and an email and a phone number you can contact at any time, not some info account you send a message to and hope you get a message back. And that's going to be the quarterback between Seneca County and our team to get the county up and running as quickly as possible. In addition to that person, there's going to be a whole host of other training and support for not just the finance team, but really anyone at the county is looking to use the software. So for the kind of really basic, how do I click this button to do this? There's a whole host of online academy resources, like tutorial videos and things like that. Once you've kind of gotten that basic foundation on how do I click this button, that's when we do more in-depth training so that you're getting the most out of the software. These can be one-on-one Zoom meetings, these can be working group sessions with other similar ClearGov clients. We also do really complex trainings as well. And in addition to all of that, we offer one-on-one support, whether that be on the phone, which is available from nine to five, or email support, which is available from nine to eight Eastern. So you have your person who's actually your quarterback for the product, for the account, excuse me. We do all those different trainings and then you also have that live support available, whether that be mail or via phone. And we are proud to also be supporting a 98% satisfaction rating with both our, a 98% satisfaction rate with our onboarding process and a 96% satisfaction rating with our training based on a survey of our 1,400 clients. Most recently, we've won awards for our training and support as well.
Supervisor Latini?
Yes, question to Julie. We know the cost is roughly $15,000 after the first prorated year. If you had an opportunity to characterize the value back to the county, so are we seeing a cost avoidance because of efficiency improvement and the resources that usually go into preparing the budget and put some of the revenue? Are there additional insights that this tool and digital software will help drive, which will improve the process, improve our county? And ultimately, if you haven't done one yet, if prepared for the board has voted approval for it, would you be able to put a value statement to a return on investment, return on investment summary very brief for us to make this?
I haven't prepared an ROI review, but in looking and talking about the process and how, what it looks like for people to go online to look at our budget, this is much more valuable tool that they would actually be able to see and understand instead of just reading through a bunch of pages with numbers and accounts and they don't know what any of that means. So if they have more directed questions, we think this may be something that may, instead of people calling with questions about it, this, they would be able to help answer some of those questions. So part of that's not really quantifiable because of that, if people can go and get at that information themselves. That helps answer.
And do you see this as a labor improvement? Does it augment any of your team's
It does. So some of the piece that it takes to put together, to put together the part specifically what Rob was talking about with the data, table of contents, we have to put it in a specific format when we send it into New York State for our budget pieces. So the time and energy that it takes to do that is, would, this would help solve a lot of that.
Super
Does the munis program that we now, does that cost any money? Ape for that?
We do.
Would there be a saving getting rid of that and adding?
This is, this is just an add-on to that. So the munis is like our language in finance of what those accounts and everything means. This is putting it out there for everybody in a language that people can understand and read easier is how I would look at it.
Did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, I guess, Rob, because, well, in terms of Supervisor Latini's comment, right, it does seem that some of the value added or the return on investment, which are good questions, some of it's not quantifiable in dollar amounts, it seems. Just like looking at what was presented, it would be easier for me to understand, for constituents to understand, as you said, yeah.
I think it helps Seneca County go in a direction to get better at communicating with our constituents
Yeah.
and having them understand the services that the county provides.
Right. And I like the way the different data sources, like with the Census Bureau, add in and can then be reflected. My question, I guess, for Rob is, do they, I think he mentioned this, but do they also provide this for town-level government?
Yes, we do. So we have 1,400 clients across the country, pretty much any subcategory of local government uses our software. We have a lot of town clients, city clients, village clients, school districts, special districts, just actually started working with a library district the other day. So yeah, lots of communities use our software. Actually, the town of Milton in Saratoga County became a GFOA budget award winner. I believe they might be the smallest GFOA award winner in New York State thanks to our software. But I also wanted to, and that kind of leads to my, the point I was going to make about the ROI, you know, your auditors here who presented earlier, I think they'd be the first person to tell you the value of Government Finance Officer Association best practices and these awards. The GFOA has an award around the audit, the award in excellence for reporting, and they have one for the budget. And in terms of quantifiable ROI, Orange County, last year, I believe it was AA+ they earned for their credit rating. They were, one of the reasons they were able to get that rating upgrade was because they became a GFOA budget award winner and they created a more transparent and policymaking-oriented budget process. And to get a credit rating increase, obviously is going to have, save the county thousands of, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars in the medium term. So right there, something like that, improving your budget process can lead to something that would have tremendous impact on the county's financial outlook in the future.
You mentioned about the other thing, because I was interested in the capital planning and stuff. Is that, is that additional cost? Okay.
Yeah, there's additional costs for that. So this is the piece that we thought we could, we could get started with this piece of it. Then it's something we could always look at adding on
Gotcha.
to, for future uses.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Rob.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate the opportunity to present tonight.
Okay, moving on to issue number three. So a resolution to authorize an agreement with ClearGov and making an amendment to the 2025 Seneca County budget.
So move. Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carried. Issue number four, resolution authorizing amendments to the 2025 Seneca County budget.
So move. Second.
Any questions on this one? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Motion carried. Issue number five, a resolution calling on the governor and state legislative leaders to permanently extend all existing local sales tax rates and allow all counties to set their local rate for up to 4% under local law and to reform the process for other home rule revenue options.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? This is similar, this is similar to a resolution that NISAC just passed at their fall seminar last week. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Motion carried. Issue number six, a resolution urging Governor Kathy Hochul and New York State Legislature to fundamentally alter state spending to ensure New York is on a fiscally sustainable path without shifting new costs to local government taxpayers.
Support. Second.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Again, this is another resolution that was adopted at the NISAC Fall Seminar last week. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carried. Moving on to any unfinished business for the Ways and Means Committee. Moving on to new business, you have the reports we got from jewelry, Julie, sorry, the year-to-date budget report and the finance update. Any questions for Julie? Or Julie, did you want to point out anything in particular?
No, I think from what we've, what we're seeing, some of the highlights is probably the sales tax. We're trending right now 6% ahead of where we plan to be with that. So that's a large
Good for a change.
Any other new business?
I have none.
Okay, so if there's no other new business, I do, would like, I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to section 105-1F of the New York State Open Meetings Law to review the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. And I invite all members of the Board of Supervisors and the Deputy County Manager to join us.
Motion. Second. Are we going to the Heroes Room?
And we're going to go to the Heroes Room for executive session so we don't have to have everybody else leave. So all those in favor say aye.
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 Make sure everybody takes off their microphone.
Make sure everybody takes off their microphone.
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
For which?
Hey Jake, that's us.
Fill up water and sewer?
Yeah.
I'm the first one.
In the middle? Yep, so.
Should just be the one in the upper left there.
Okey dokey, um, all right. Hans.
I believe that should be lanternfly one.
Turn on your mic.
Double click here.
Turn your microphone.
Okay.
And I'm with you.
Um.
Yeah, I know.
So I will, um. Soon as everybody's ready here.
Yeah, it's Mr. Av. Here's, uh, can you give us a presentation on Spotted Lanternfly?
Alrighty, so thank you all for having us here tonight, um, to present on the Spotted Lanternfly and the Tree of Heaven. Before I introduce our presenters, because I'm handing it over to the experts, because that's our thing to do, I just want to call your attention to the red folders on your desks. When you just are all talking about budgets, since you're in the middle of budget season, I hope you will forgive the fact that I took the opportunity to put some information about our local programs, regional ag teams, and statewide programs on the right side, and on the left is all the resources about tonight's topic. Judy Wright also wanted to make sure that I asked, or I made sure I invited you to our Celebrate Seneca County Ag Night, which will take place on Tuesday, October 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at Fall Street Brewing in Seneca Falls. This is the event we formally held on the first night of the county fair, and we hope the change of season and venue will increase turnout. We will be showcasing all the great things about Seneca County agriculture, including food and beverage samples, and we hope you'll make the time to join us. Tonight, we would like to give you an update on the infestation of the invasive spotted lanternfly in the county, as well as its preferred host, the Tree of Heaven. First up is Senior Extension Associate Hans Walter Peterson. Hans is the head of our CCE's Fingerlakes Grape Program Regional Ag Team. He works extensively with our grape growers and wineries, and is up to date on all of the latest research from Cornell, our land grant system, and ag and markets on the Spotted Lanternfly. Hans will be followed by our local CCE Environmental and Natural Resources educator, Ryan Stachak, who has a master's degree in forestry, and will talk about the Tree of Heaven, including how to identify it. I will now turn it over to Hans.
Are we ready? Good evening. Thank you for, Abe, thanks for the invitation. Thank you all for this opportunity to tell you a little bit about what's going on here in Seneca County. Some of you may have learned, probably heard, that this invasive, this new invasive pest, which first got into the United States about 10 years ago now, has been kind of our first population found near the Fingerlakes Vineyards, near some of the Fingerlakes Vineyards, was discovered last year. At that point, it was a fairly small contained population. What we've since learned is that it is probably bigger than we first thought, and is rapidly expanding. So, it is, it's a pest that we knew was on its way, it was just not, it was a matter of when, not if, it would get here. So, I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on the status of that population, just what the Spotted Lanternfly is, and why it's a concern, especially to the grape industry, as it does potentially have an impact to our vineyards. So, can we?
There you go. Yep, you can just use the, okay.
Okay, great, thanks. So, for starters, this is what it looks like. So, this is the adult lanternfly, and I'll show you a little bit more about the lifecycle in a little bit. There's, obviously, there's a lot of information that we're learning about this thing, and so I'm just gonna, like I said, just gonna give you a very brief overview. So, as I said, in 2014, the first population was discovered in Berks County, which is in southeast Pennsylvania, kind of a suburb of Philadelphia. This fly, this pest originally originates from southeast Asia, so from South Korea, North Korea, China area, and so it's believed that it hitchhiked on a shipment of landscaping supplies that came over from there. Came to a nursery, got into, and then was released from there. So, that was 10 years ago. The blue here are all of the counties where that fly has now established populations. So, in 10 years, this fly has invaded almost the entire state of Pennsylvania, all of New Jersey, all of, out into Long Island, through, all over New York City, all the way down into Virginia, North Carolina, and as far, as far west as Chicago. Individuals have been found in many other states, including California, where they are very, very worried about it, because of the large grape industry out there, obviously, but, and so are looking to us for kind of understanding of what it looks like, and kind of how to live with it. So, this is, this is a broad view of what's in the northeast, which is where the vast majority of them are right now. Honing in on New York, they are most populous right now, kind of in the lower Hudson Valley, and into, they're in all five boroughs of New York City, and out onto Long Island. My colleague, Alice Wise, who works out on Long Island, has been finding them in her vineyard this year, in her research vineyard. And like I said, it is, it is, there are now populations established around Binghamton, Syracuse, several in the Fingerlakes area, and one out in Buffalo, Erie County out there. So, it is, it spreads rapidly, because it is a very efficient hitchhiker. They move, basically, the most, the most effective way, and the most way that almost all of them move about, is because they basically ride on cars, rails, trucks. Not only do they just ride along on them, but they actually lay their eggs on these things too, in the fall, and so as those things get moved, and then stay over winter, or whatever, those egg cases can be deposited in new areas, new populations start. That's basically how we, how we're pretty sure that the population here in Seneca County got here. There is, we don't know this for sure, but there, that area, there are several campgrounds, and rental homes, and things like that, where a lot of tourists come, and so it's very likely that somebody brought either a pregnant female, or several pregnant females, or several individuals, they came up and started to create a population here. And so that's, we're pretty sure that is how this, 99% sure that's how this population got started here in this area. So, this is a map, this is actually from last year, but basically, when this population was first found on the west side of Kiuga Lake, Ag and Markets quickly sent out a team of inspectors to try to identify where in the area that they could find these, and so you can see there's, each of those red dots is where they were able to find them. Again, this is last July and August. And so there's a fairly concentrated area, right in that area where the blob is, right on the shore there. Again, that's an area where there's a bunch of townhomes, and other homes that are used as rental properties, as well as residences, and then up in the general area, within about a mile there as well. So, so that is where that population is right now. There is another population in Ontario County, in Geneva, right by the whole Martin Williams Smith campus, and there is a third population in Ithaca, that has been, that was probably, that was found several years ago, and just this year is really starting to show up on campus. So, there's finding a lot more adults on campus now here as well. So, that's basically where they are. This is what they look like on a grapevine. They are, they have a very strong aggregating behavior, which means that basically, they don't evenly spread out across a whole area. They will tend to congregate on a single plant. So, generally, what we find is, whether it's on a tree, or on a grapevine, or whatever, we don't find one or two, we tend to find 20 or 30, and they might not be on any other surrounding plants. But this is what they look like. They do not feed on the fruit. They don't care about the fruit at all. They feed on the sap. And so, these are, these are plant hoppers, and so they have a very strong proboscis, this little straw, basically, it's their mouth part, and they stick that into the vine, and they suck out the sap. And so that's what their feed, is the sugars and the nutrients that are in that sap is what they want. And so, with the grapevine, like I said, they're not going after the fruit. We don't see them causing damage to fruit, but what they do is they basically are literally sucking the life out of the vines. One individual doesn't do very much damage. It's a tiny little insect. Well, it's actually not tiny, it's about an inch long. But, when enough of them feed on a grapevine for long enough, they can start to remove some of the nutrients and starches and things like that. The grapevines need to survive, and I've got a little information about that. But this is what they look like on, in the, in the middle of the fall. And so, right now, this is the stage there, and they've just turned into adults about, within the past few weeks. Their favorite host, their favorite host, which they basically evolved with, is this Tree of Heaven, which is another invasive species that was brought to, ironically, Philadelphia, several, a couple hundred years ago. But they co-evolved with this, and so there's a special relationship between these two. The lanternfly will feed on many different kinds of trees and plants, but Tree of Heaven is an important one, but grapevines are also a highly preferred host as well. This slide just basically is a very quick summary of some, a bunch of research that has been done over the years, but was done by a grad student down at Penn State, basically showing kind of what some of the impacts are. So, above-ground parts of the vine, below-ground parts of the vine. The biggest thing that we're finding is how they damage vines, is they basically reduce the amount of starch that is in the vines as they overwinter. That starch is what the vines need to start growth the following year, and help them to survive our winters. If those starch reserves are depleted, because the lanternflies have been feeding on those vines, the vines are less able to survive the winters, and then go into the next year, then they can actually die. When this, when this insect first showed up in Pennsylvania, we saw, there were pictures of vineyards with an acre or more of dead vines, because there had been so much feeding on them, and this is before we kind of really knew what was happening, and knew what to handle. But, so there are, there are different impacts, depending on how many of them are feeding, but they can have a serious impact on the health of grapevines, and so that is why our vineyards and our grape growers are very concerned about them. And so, in the realm of why, why are we worried about this, this is a table, basically, I know it's a very busy one, but basically, there's a table summarizing an economic impact study that was done at Cornell, looking at the potential impacts of Spotted Lanternfly. And basically, what they found is, obviously, economic impact studies have all sorts of assumptions that go into them, but in the Fingerlakes alone, they estimate, as a population builds, somewhere around $2 to $2.5 million dollar impact on grape growing per year, and that's And that's just on the grape growing, that's not, that's not considering the wine that would get produced from that. And to New York State, somewhere around almost eight, almost $9 million per year in impact. So this thing can have an impact on our, on our industry. And again, that's why we're concerned about it and why we're trying to minimize its impacts. Ryan is gonna talk a lot more, a bit more about this, but as I said, the Tree of Heaven is a tree that is, that has co-evolved with this insect, but lanternfly can feed on over 70 different other kinds of species. So when we talk about trying to control it or trying to eradicate it, at this point, eradication is pretty much a non-factor. This thing is here, it is going, it has plenty of places that it can survive and can feed on, but this, again, the Tree of Heaven is something that, that we're especially interested in trying to control because they reproduce better if they are able to have access to this Tree of Heaven. This is the basic life cycle. They have one generation per year, which is a good thing compared to a number of other insects that can have multiple generations in a given year. But basically, they go from eggs in the, in the fall and wintertime, they overwinter, they survive our cold temperatures just fine. Those eggs are, they're not sensitive enough to the cold to really have any impact. Then they go through a series of instars, these are basically nymphs, and they get, they grow, get bigger. The nymphs are really not a problem as far as they do feed on grapevines and other plants, but they're very small and so they don't have much of an impact. It's when they reach adulthood that they really start to have a major impact on grapevines and lots of other, and other plants as well when they're feeding. In addition to causing harm to grapevines, they can be an incredible nuisance to landowners and homeowners. As I said, they feed on the sap of the grapevines and trees and other plants. They can't digest all of that and so, just like us, they have waste products. The waste product that they emit, that they poop out their back end is called honeydew and it's basically sugary water. And that sugary water then lands onto plants, lands on outdoor furniture, patios, and actually can then attract other, other organisms like sooty molds and other things like that. And so for example, the picture in the middle there is steps, those top two steps are covered with mold because they were covered in this honeydew. The other thing that attracts then is, attracts other insects, for example, like bees. And so if you have people who are allergic to bee stings, that can be a major concern for them, obviously. In the vineyard, yellow jackets, which are attracted to sugars, they're looking for sugar in the fall, that brings yellow jackets into the vineyard, they can cause other damage to the fruit itself as well. So again, it's something that we're, that's an impact that's, that we're, that we're concerned about. The egg masses are really where, where a lot of the concern comes from because these egg masses can be laid literally anywhere. So this is a picture of a bunch of them on a vineyard fence post, or vineyard post, and they look like splotches of mud. They don't stand out at all. And so it's very easy to miss them, but we're encouraging this, this fall and this winter, we are gonna be working with our industry to talk, to help them talk to their, their field workers who are gonna be doing pruning, about how to identify these egg masses and what to do about them if they do find them. As I said, they can be laid anywhere. So not only in fence posts and grapevines and vineyards, but they can lay them on camping equipment, on patio furniture, on vehicles, just about anywhere that you can imagine. So this isn't just an issue for, for vineyards and for agriculturists, this is a, this is potentially an issue for everybody. This is not just a vineyard problem, it's a landscape problem. So just to finish up, there's obviously way more that we could talk about and I'm happy to answer questions, but the thing that I keep telling people is that this is a new invasive pest, we've had other ones before. This is not the end of grape growing in New York from this thing. It's just, it's another pest that we have to learn how to manage. We've been incredibly fortunate that our friends in Pennsylvania, Penn State University, and other places have been very generous with the information and the research they're sharing with us. It's one of the things that we're able to bring to our growers is having that relationship with those other researchers. We can come to that, come back to the growers and say, this is what we know, how this insect behaves, these are things that do work, these are things that don't work, and how growers can do that. And so our advice to growers right now can be basically summed up in a few different things. Scout, scout, scout. Keep an eye out for these things, whether they're adults or the egg masses that, that are out there. Know where they are and know how to deal with them when they come. These things are very susceptible to different insecticides. Nobody likes to spray insecticides, but they are, they are, can be an effective way to control them. The thing that's gonna be a bit of a challenge is that these things will continue feeding on grapevines until the first hard freeze. Hard freeze will kill the adults. But the grapevines still have sap moving through them until the leaves drop. And so even after harvest, there might be a need for growers to do some kind of control measures, which they're not used to doing. So that's gonna be a new thing. And then like we said, we've been talking about to growers about possibly trying to eliminate Tree of Heaven where it's feasible because of that, that special relationship we have. And a lot of what we've been doing until they showed up now has been helping growers how to, learn how to identify the Tree of Heaven compared to other things that look kind of like it, like sumac and black walnut and a bunch of others. And so that's where educators like Ryan come in and are a fantastic resource for us to partner with so that we can reach not just our growers, but also other, other individuals in the, in the counties. So, should we take questions now or?
Where's Ryan going?
Okay, yeah, then we can do it together. Yeah, go for it, thanks.
You've got a different presentation. From the beginning, feel free to use the right microphone. Hi, everybody. Good evening. My name is Ryan Stachak. Thanks, A, and Hans for the introduction. Trying to take a little bit, the least amount of time here. Yeah, I got a master's in forestry and I taught the tree class for a while at Colorado State. So this is really fun to be back in this role. It's called Tree of Heaven, but many times you'll hear people call it Alanthus, so sometimes that could be confusing to people. Alanthus is the scientific name of the, of the genus. I think the key takeaways for management here, again, Hans mentioned, excuse me, it was introduced in the late 1700s. So the Spotted Lanternfly came 10 years ago, but this tree's been here for over 200 years. So we have to, that's really important to keep in mind. It is, has a prolific root sprouting and stump sprouts. And what that, I'll go over that a little bit later, but what that means is if we just go in and cut it down, all the roots and all the carbohydrates that are stored in the roots send up suckers. That look like this. So I got this this morning and a tree was cut down recently, a large female tree, and right around it were probably 100 of these that were shot up. So as soon as you cut it down, you have to, you're gonna get more. So it's something to consider with management.
Bring the spotted fly with that thing?
That's a good question, what you, what you just asked. Right, there's, there's some opportunity for that. It grows almost anyplace. This tree is, it was brought over here in the 1700s because it grows straight and it grows anywhere, it provides a lot of shade. However, it got out of control, it starts, it becomes an invasive pest and people couldn't control it, so then it became invasive. It grows along railroadways and with lots of limestone as a base. It grows on the sides of parking lots, it grows in forests. About the only thing it does not like is shade. It does not like to grow in the under canopy of the forest. So that's one positive. But other than that, it loves full sunshine and it grows anyplace. Treatment and management, if you want to eradicate the, this species, you have to consider the timing of when you're gonna apply management. So your treatment and management has to be timed correctly and we want to target the roots, all right? So we want to think about the above-ground versus the below-ground biomass, specifically the roots. We want to try to kill the roots as much as we can. And we're in a phase right now where it's basically asset-based protection, long-term management, and I'll go over that in a sec. We want to use herbicides first, see the symptoms as they show on the, on the tree, and then, and then eradicate it or cut it. Identification. The bark looks like a cantaloupe. There's no other tree that really looks like that. This is a picture of the bark up in that corner here, it's got the, the ridges are lightly colored and inside the furrows are darker colored. It looks like a cantaloupe. The leaves are panately compound, meaning that there is a central rachis or a central stem, and then the leaflets come off the side. This is just a demonstration of what a panately compound leaf is. This is one leaf of the Tree of Heaven, and that's what I, I passed around to everybody to take a look at. It has a central stem and it has numerous leaflets. The leaves, at the base of the leaf, there are these little glandular protuberances that, that stick out on the leaves and you could see those, it's a, it's an identifying characteristic. And the leaves are also entire or smooth around the outside of the leaf. It has very large leaf scars, as you could see with the leaves that went around. It has an alternating arrangement. So when you look on the tree, the stems come out on one side and then there's a space and then there's, it comes out on the other side. And it alternates where the twigs are coming out of the tree. Compared to sugar maples that are opposite, so if my body was the stem of a tree and I had a leaf or a twig coming out this side, directly across the other side, another one comes out, that would have an opposite arrangement. Again, large leaf scars. What's interesting with this tree is that it has samaras, and you may know about these as helicopters, similar to the maple trees. Because it's an invasive pest, it produces significant amounts of seeds and they fly far places with the wind, they're windblown. The issue to some people is that it looks a lot like a couple of our friends, are the black walnut and the stag horn sumac. Someone knew the sumac when I brought that in today? Similar panately compound leaf, right? Has a large droop on it, you see these sticking out of the forest, that's your sumac. And then of course, the black walnut, similar leaf, again, panately compound leaf, much different outside of the leaf though. These leaves are friendly leaves, have serrations on the leaves, or tiny little teeth that go around the outside of them. Okay, that's the key. Don't, don't go killing black walnuts at your cousins. Check the outside of the leaves and make sure that they have, if they have teeth on them and they're, and then they're what we call serrations, they're most, they are, they are a native species. Compared to, again, the Tree of Heaven on the right has an entire margin or it's smooth on the outside. Little bit longer in most cases, but again, they could be confusing to some people. Root suckers, as we talked about earlier, it's pretty common. However, with this tree, when you cut it, all of a sudden you'll see a bunch of these come up right on the, they start growing prolifically right after you cut it down. So you have to really manage the time that you're going to eradicate them. This is a reminder about the invasion curve, and this is as non-native species become more established over time, the effort and the associated costs of addressing it get exponentially higher. Unfortunately, we're probably in that upper red area with this species where we have to focus on long-term management and asset-based protection such as our grape, our agricultural lands, including our grape industry. Here's the management calendar, and a lot of this information is within the second handout on the left column, or left packet of the red folder that AVE handed out through Penn State. So we're really thankful for that sister organization to provide this information. Top two rows refer to the tree growth stage and the bottom two rows refer to the human management action. So when we look at, for example, September, we could see that we should be foliar or stem treatments right now, if you have, if you have the capacity to apply the, some type of herbicide. Late summer is the best time to do that because we want to, we want to attack the tree and make sure that the herbicides get into the roots. And that's what's happening now. So the trees and most plants are sending carbohydrates back down to their roots. So the timing in which people manage this tree is really, really important if you want to effectively eradicate them. There's foliar applications, which is applying herbicides to the leaves, we can apply herbicide to the bark, and then there's also a technique called hack and squirt, and it is simply just that. You hack the tree up and you apply herbicide as soon as you can in the late months of the summer, July, August, and September. And then after you see symptoms on the tree, then you can cut it down. Again, you want to target the roots and you want to get that herbicide into the roots to kill it. So here are some examples of tools that we'll use. Which one should we not use? Anybody? The chainsaw, that's right. And so on the bottom there is an example of the hack and squirt. Hack the tree and then immediately put some herbicide into the cuts and try to get that herbicide to go down into the roots. And then on the top there is a pretty motor, is a, is an auger, one-man auger, fuel, fuel-driven there, that you can drill into the tree and then apply herbicide into that also. Any questions, please feel free to ask. I'll let Hans take the microphone over. If anything comes up, always reach out to CCE if you have any questions. And thanks for the attention.
I have a question. If this came from China, what are they doing? I mean, they must have some way to control it. I mean, they're...
So the, the thing that is always a challenge with invasive pests is that there is not a native ecosystem that manages them. And so where, where an insect is originally from, there are all sorts of predators that feed on these things. So birds, there are fungi, there are other insects that, that attack them, that feed on different parts of the life cycle. We just don't, we don't have those because they didn't evolve here. And so as a new species evolves, things learn to eat them as well. And so what they've been finding in Pennsylvania, where it's been around the longest, is that they're just now starting to see evidence that birds are, not in huge quantities, but birds are learning, oh, this is something that I can possibly eat. We're seeing a little bit of an increase of insects kind of learning that they can eat these things. And so, but that takes a lot, a lot, a lot of time. There's, there have been people who have gone over there to look for some of these predatory other organisms and looking at the feasibility of bringing some of them back for release. There's all sorts of issues that are around that too. Do you create a bigger problem than the thing that you originally brought into control? Some things like that. There's been plenty of examples of those in the past. So, but there, that is being examined. Are there, one of the probably more hopeful ones is that we're finding a number of different fungal, fungal species that are actually here, native in the, in the US, that will feed on insects. Not just lanternfly, but all sorts of different ones. And we are, we have found some instances where that is seeming to occur. So there's actually an attempt to try to see if we can commercialize this, these, these fungi so that maybe growers can actually go out and spray them either on the vineyard themselves or even into the tree lines nearby to control this insect and hopefully encourage that to happen.
Thank you. And this tree, like, if I just looked at like a, a one acre, I've drive down Seneca Falls, see a one acre, there's like trees, these trees everywhere, are they isolated? I mean, I mean, we're like somewhere in the one acre lot, do they have these trees out there and not nowhere?
So where, as, as Ryan mentioned, where they're, where they really show up a lot is on areas where there's been disturbance. And so where we see them a lot are in things like, if you go walk along the Kiuga Outlet Trail, they're everywhere. That's probably more, more of this tree than anything else. If you look right, when you drive along in the summertime, late summer, the seeds are mostly gone now. But if you go down the thruway, if you go down any highway that's been recently cut, that's been, that was in the past 30 years, you'll see these trees lining the roadways. So what we're actually kind of fortunate about is, one difference between us and some of the areas in Pennsylvania is that a lot of our vineyards don't have a lot of Tree of Heaven directly around them. So they have plenty of black walnut and sumac and a lot of other things. And so, like I said, the kind of, the, a big part of this special relationship that this insect and this tree seem to have is that if the insects can feed on Tree of Heaven as part of their diet, as they're, as they're growing, is that they're able to, the females are able to lay more eggs and more egg masses if they feed on this tree. And so by controlling the tree, we're not saying that'll eliminate the host because like I said, they feed on 70 other species, but it kind of bends the curve a bit. And so that's what we're trying to encourage with our growers, is that if we can have them not feeding on this tree as part of their life cycle, they can't lay as many eggs and so the populations don't explode as quickly.
Thank you.
To just make a pitch, we're gonna put together a program through Seneca County, we'll do a webinar in late October, maybe early Monday, we're just... We'll do a webinar in late October, maybe early Monday. We're just trying to line up the speakers. Anybody's welcome to attend that. It's going to be virtual to kind of do the same thing for the general public. We're trying to educate everybody. And so we're going to put a webinar together, one of the late Mondays in October or the first Monday in November, once we can line up all the speakers. We've got Penn State already confirmed. Somebody from the Finger Lakes Prism is going to talk about that. And we're going to be able to record that and put it on a website so that everybody can kind of see this and just try to get out of the information gap there.
Thank you very much for the very informative presentation.
China's killing us.
Now you know everything you need to know about lanternfly.
All these pesticides are going to cause the lakes to...
Issue number two, the resolution urging the state of New York to establish a working group to identify safe and sustainable alternatives to the land application of biosolids contaminated with PFASs and other emerging contaminants. We have to amend this resolution because it reads contaminated with P's. We don't like that. So and on the statement itself, the resolution urging the state of New York to establish a working group to identify safe and sustainable alternatives to the land application of biosolids contaminated with PFASs and other emerging contaminants. I'd like to make a motion to amend this resolution.
I'll second it.
Changing the P-E-A-Ss to P-FASs and also... Come on. Right after the last whereas, now therefore be it resolved that the Senate County Board of Supervisors calls upon the Governor of New York State, would like to eliminate and the New York State Association of Counties. I'd like to amend that, eliminate that sentence because we can't tell them what to do. Can I have a second to amend this resolution?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass with the amendment to this resolution now. Thank you. And this would be the resolution urging the state of New York to establish a working group to identify safe and sustainable alternatives to the land application of biosolids contaminated with PFASs and other emerging contaminants. You can read the whole statement here, but we're worried about the state just saying, no, you can't do this and you can't do that and putting the burden of finding a solution strictly on the local governments. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried. And we also have number three. It's the update to appointments to the Region Eight Fish and Wildlife Management Advisory Board. Got a support and a second. This is... There's three representatives from each county in Region Eight that advise the DEC on access and habitat. I've been going to these meetings since the 80s as a landowner and as a legislative representative, but they're always informative meetings. You get representatives from the state fisheries and wildlife and the ECOs to give a presentation on Region Eight, which goes from Kewa Lake to Lake Batavia and from Lake Ontario to Pennsylvania. And I'm on it currently and they rearranged the dates similar to the voting terms. So the Sportsman's Representative, Tom Grasik, he's been there, willing to serve again. And landowner representative Frank Sinicropi, he's agreed to serve too. So I just need a resolution to pass these appointments. If I'm not around as a legislative representative, maybe I'll go as a Sportsman's Representative or something. But I need a motion to pass this? Second?
In favor, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed? Opposed? Any unfinished business? New business? Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up is Water and Sewer Treatment Management Operations Supervisor Don Trell.
Are we sitting there dusting buildings?
Well, no.
You can sit there if you want.
All right. So Public Water and Sewer Treatment Operations Order, Order Number 1, Brian Sriga, Wendell.
Yeah, so just a quick introduction. Two weeks ago, a leak was noted, was found at the Hillside Tank. A week ago, Brian came out to evaluate that and to put together a quick report to sort of summarize what the issue is and then lay out some possible ways to resolve it.
Sure.
Um, pardon me. Just in general, the Hillside Tank, it was actually put in in 1955, so it's 70 years old. So let's just say that there's a lot of old material and old infrastructure there that is probably served twice as long as it realistically could expect for it to last. Going there and looking at the current thing is there's actually a hole in the pipe as it goes through the concrete and it goes up to the riser. And you think, okay, there's a hole in the pipe. You can put a band on. The location of the hole is such that you can't actually get a band or a pair or anything on it without physically starting to remove the concrete support that in addition to supporting the riser also was integral to the whole tank foundation. So in kind of looking at that, one of the things that was kind of discussed is that tank was originally put up when obviously the Army Base had lots of people there. It really was sized for demands that are way greater than what it really currently services. So actually, one of the things that was looked at is, is this tank needed anymore? So we physically did do some evaluation in looking at the tank. The other thing is seeing the size and condition of that tank and some of the paint coating starting to come off as well as some of the steel being probably problematic at best. You would need a significant and significant in the financial world would be costly rehabilitation to keep using that tank. So we actually looked at three options and did some regulatory research and verification that they do make sense. Three options we did look at is, okay, let's repair this tank. Let's call the current situation an emergency, get that repaired and let's go through and do the coating rehabilitation. And also, one of the things the analysis found is with your current demands, that tank does not have adequate turnover. And what that means if the water doesn't go in and out quick enough by certain thresholds, the standards that you follow in New York require it to turn over within, actually within five days. Your current system or your current demands for that tank turn over in closer to 14 or 15 days. So it doesn't necessarily mean that your water is unsafe. It just means that you do have a potential of having more disinfection byproducts or things. If you did decide to rehab and keep that tank, it means you'd need to put in some type of mechanical mixing that would make sure that all the water and anything in there is being mixed together and you don't get different levels of contaminant. Second thing we looked at is, okay, this tank isn't really needed anymore from a storage perspective. Let's look at taking it out of service. To be honest, closing the valve, leaving it there to house cell phone towers or other things, anything the county can be honest, could get from a revenue source. And looking at actually upgrading the Ross Valve PRV, Site 827, that is a PRV building that both the PRV, which is a pressure reducing valve, it takes higher pressure water and lowers it down so it won't blow up water lines. It brings it within the pressure that you need. And what it can be done is, it can basically be done similar to the Romulus Meter where you take the location, you take out the piping in there, you likely do extend the concrete pad and you do a new building. All the infrastructure there is in really bad shape. And even looking at it, right now having the tank, you have flexibility if something happens and then those valves break or the piping breaks where you can get by a period of time where you can get out there and make some type of repair. By discontinuing use of the tank, we would want to have that PRV, the pressure reducing valves, that building and that piping all replaced so you were comfortable, as well as putting a bypass around it so you did have redundancy, so you were comfortable using that. Third option we did look at is, well, tank leaks, the pipe leaks, we're losing water. Just leave it there. What happens if we just leave it? And I will say, when I talk about the options, that is a short-term option you could do, but even looking at that, it doesn't end up viable for very long. So just in summary, when we looked at rehabbing the existing tank and these numbers, well, these numbers are relatively preliminary. It looks like that's upwards of 700,000. It doesn't look like, when you're looking at rehabbing a tank that's 70 years old, you're effectively, you don't know what the next parts that are going to go bad. It is not something that we would recommend investing that size of money particularly when you don't need it. We did look at the overall storage from the system and you do have the Five Points Tank, the tank that's at Five Points, that is large enough to take on these demands that are about $30,000, 30,000 gallons per day at most, an average even less than that, without losing any of its required capacity. So it would still be within regulatory requirements, would have adequate storage, you would have adequate fire flow. We did look at all those things. So what we actually looked at then is we dove into more of redoing that Ross Valve, Site 827. And these estimates are probably a little bit higher than I'm guessing you'll see depending on how you complete the work. These estimates are 105,000, but that does is based on the contractors or contractors doing a lot of the work. It's something that the county staff has done a good job with the Romulus Meter and doing work from that. Pretty sure it would end up being, it could, the cost could be reduced. And then lastly, the option we did look at is, okay, your do-nothing scenario. We actually looked at the leak and the amount of water that's going through. It's somewhere between five to 10 gallons per minute. It's pretty much a garden hose full on or a little more. Based on that loss and the approximate $6 per thousand gallons you're paying for that water that goes in there, you'd be losing somewhere between 15,000 and 31,000 per year. So just taking the average is 23,000. That means in less than five years, you would have paid, you would have paid for the cost of doing the PRV pit and then you can, PRV building, you can shut off the valve and stop the leaking. One of the other things is that there is some discussion that as the county's water system as a whole evolves, that maybe some of the customers that are fed after the Hillside Tank will have other options for feeding the water. When we kind of looked at it, we kind of looked at trying to make sure that the options were, even though there's still large amounts of money, more economical because maybe in, after five, six, seven years, maybe there will be a new way to feed Varick and to bring water a different direction. But because some of those things haven't started yet, we didn't feel that you could just float through and let that water continue to leak because it would, in addition to deteriorating the condition, likely other things would happen. So you do need to do some type of interim type repair. And we kind of thought five years was a good window to kind of look at the economics for the improvement. So kind of based on that visit, looking at the standards, looking at the sizing, we would recommend that the county proceeds with option number two. It will likely require some coordination with the local health department, making sure that they're okay with it. But that tank was really needed when your situation was so much different than it is now. You actually can't even meet the standards for the amount of water you go in and out the tank. That's why you don't meet the turnover standard because it's so oversized. And it's 70 years old. You like to plan on your stuff lasting 25, 30 years, maybe 40 in the best case, but once you run 70, you know stuff is just going to happen. And once you start to take stuff apart, kind of like when you're demoing your bathroom project or whatever and you start taking the wall of powder or stuff, other stuff you kind of uncover and other stuff breaks where just it's probably something where you would definitely not need a lot of contingency if you went that route. So the 700,000, which is probably a pretty optimistic number, also the paint likely has lead. So versus the 100,000 with getting something that's going to be much more resilient. And also with the PRV upgrade option, that can stay as a backup even if you do get other water. And in case there's something where you take it out of service, you have two routes to get there. So it's something that, looking into this, we really like. Just from a technical perspective, it makes the most sense. So it's probably the best way to kind of do that.
You spent 700 grand on something like that, which doesn't... But how long would it last? Is this guaranteed?
Nope. No. So that's why we did, that was one of the reasons we didn't recommend it. Because it may be you repair all those things and there's another spot where the steel, because it's 70 years old, just comes apart at a seam or something and you can't, even if you go through and you do testing for the thickness and all that.
Nobody's going to want to fix it for 700 grand when you just spent 100.
Yeah. That was kind of our, and I think also your risk of things going wrong with the 100 is probably actually less. You got lines, basically you're going to put in new lines that are inside a newer building that's heated and is new. I'd feel a lot more comfortable saying that was going to last longer than the tank. But we did say, to give you all the information, we would look at it.
Well, that guarantee, you spent 700, you spent 100.
So what's the next step? I mean, I would agree with Don. I think we need to move in that direction. The only thing I would add is that when Fayette's Water District Eight is completed, let's say by the end of 2027, we will be able to feed back. There will be a pump station at Rose Hill that will feed eight and then five and then back in the Varick and all that.
No. And I mean, the other thing we looked at too is there's not a lot, but there's maybe 1,000 gallons per day, a little bit still in the area. So it might be something where even just this is nice to feed that versus if you end up having to add more length to your infrastructure to tie it in. It's probably not a bit, it's probably a good thing to have both redundancy, long-term, and to have the ability to not add infrastructure for 1,000 gallons per day.
Plus, we'll sell it at a lot less money back to the county.
I just know, all I can comment is your current rate that you're selling it. That's all I'll comment on and giving you the numbers from the water used to the rate. I don't have any other comment on that.
Well, just again, so folks can acknowledge and know, by the time it gets to the folks in the hamlet of Fayette, with the new rates, it's going to be over $11. It's going to be pushing $11 per thousand. And that, I'm sorry, is absolutely ridiculous.
100 grand?
Yes.
Are we 100 grand or 700 grand?
So what is, yeah, Don, so what's the next step? How do we get them moving on that?
Can I say something? All right. I just don't know how relevant this is, but so we have radio equipment on Hillside Tower and Ontario County has done a structural analysis on the structure of that tower because we have an agreement with them to use that tower and we share that tower with them, just like we share their tower in Ontario County. And based on that structural analysis, there's a lot of money that they're going to be putting into that. We're interested in putting into the structure or the legs of that tower, just so you're aware of that. So they're interested in investing in it for us.
Yeah. In that part, I think if your only goal was to keep the tower standing and you didn't have that line that goes through the concrete structure, I think that's more doable because that stuff that's all exposed, you can get to and you can make repairs. And the fact that you have that and it physically is sited and is high enough where it can be used for towers and that, I don't see any reason why you need to take it down. I think it can be used for that, just for actually storing water that high. There isn't really a lot of benefit, but it probably has some value just as a landing place for cell towers or stuff like that, radio communication where the weight's obviously a lot less than having 200,000 gallons of water.
Brian, I'm curious, if we stop using it for storage water, will that extend its life?
It likely, it likely should. I mean, one of the things obviously with the water is you've got 200,000 gallons at 7.848 pounds of, pounds per gallon. You're talking 1.5 million pounds up there. Once you take that off, that weighs a lot less. And also the humidity from the water, et cetera, that are all negatives. Taking that off, it's going to last longer. Like, it doesn't look like it's going to fall over.
Right.
It's not that. And it's just more of the water coming out. So I think for that is a good use. You'll probably need to have a long-term maintenance plan and continue to do that. But it also may mean that some things relative to coating and that'll become more aesthetic-based. Also, the inside coating may be, maybe less important where it may allow you to... Also, the inside coating may be, may be less important, where it may allow you to control your cost for it as a cellphone or a, a, a tower, supporting infrastructure on top versus for the water world. You, you have different requirements you gotta do for the water world, obviously.
If it doesn't have any weight in it, like a windfall, is that gonna be a foot, something like, both sides, water's in there, you know, they have to chill.
Yeah, you, you, usually a tank like that, that's got a leg tank, one of the things you'll see is there's a lot of cross beams and cross support, that kinda ties it to a structure, and one of the requirements when a tank like that is, is done is you need to look at the scenarios for, for wind load, uh, snow load, et cetera, for both the tank empty and full. I, the tank does get, i- if you were gonna paint it, you would take it down and you would paint it, you wouldn't have water in, so it was designed for that, with the only caveat being it was put in in 1955 and some of the standards have changed some, so without doing a detailed analysis, I can't 100% say, but in general, they are designed to, to take into account those scenarios of, of it shouldn't, it should be able to handle the loading and those things without water in it, because that's one of the things you have to look at. And that's why when you look at it, you'll see the legs, but you also see there's a lot of cross bracing, there's tie downs and there's things that kinda make it more into a unit structure and give it a lot more structural support that way.
Sometimes microbursts are out here and it's 70 years old, I just don't wanna create a scenario where there's not enough weight in there or, or things on the ground, you know.
I, yeah, I mean, that's something.
What, million dollars, 3 million, 10 million dollars?
Yeah, I wonder if it would change their, um, their requirements for structural analysis, that's all.
It's probably something they should look at or whatever, is the fact if you stop using it and don't have that water in there, that they're comfortable that anything they do for any structural modifications would be able to handle that, that definitely would be a condition to make sure they look for.
They pay their insurance.
Yeah. So I mean, uh, there were some questions on, on what's the, the next step, I mean, I, I think the direction would be to kinda start the process, to get documents put together. I think as a minimum, we're gonna need to have a conversation and likely submit to the, the local health department, at least to, to find out what their thoughts on it. I think all the documentation and the reasoning, uh, uh, make total sense, the fact that your, your condition of why you need the tank is totally different now than it was originally.
So just a question, so Dan, uh, Dan, you support this option based upon?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is sort of the conversation as we start to evolve as a water and sewer or water department, it's sort of, how do you deal with this old aging infrastructure? And so here's an opportunity where, you know, we had very similar leaks to this size last year and we were able to save, you know, fix them for 7,000. But now, given where it's located, you have to sort of destabilize the tank and it's much more costly, and so you're able to sort of look at it from a higher altitude and sort of say, do we even need this still in service and how does this start to fit into the growth of water in the county? And so I support this.
So do you need a motion out of this committee or do you have what you need to move forward?
I, this is, my thought is, I, I think it would be helpful for a motion from this committee to give direction to start the process of developing plans and specs to...
I move that we develop the plant, we look into investigating the plans and specs for upgrading the Ross valve, PRV, and taking the hillside tower out of service as a water, um, tank, storage facility and look at this other option.
Okay. Would you maybe probably second it all, Thursday? Aye. I have, oh, I'm gonna go. Okay. Yeah, and you can give me this electronically and I can share this report, uh, with the board.
Yeah, one of the things with reports is we try to be a little more, um, restrictive with some of these that are, are water treatment, with there being a lot of focus on resiliency and security, so we, we, we do try to keep some of the, more of, so we'll probably note that in the report due to some of those requirements that then.
Well, and, and I think like, I mean, Scott's here from Department of Health and, um, you know, you guys can facilitate that conversation, so.
All right. Page two. Next order of business is authorizing a request for proposals for the operation and maintenance of the New York State Route 318, Route 414 municipal sewer system.
Somebody motion second.
So move.
Second.
Can I make a comment about that real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, so I, I, I strongly suggest you reach out to, uh, my water superintendent, Joe Tulo. Uh, he said, maybe you didn't get his emails, but he's been trying to email you. There's a lot of information about that stuff that needs to get in place timely, if it doesn't, I mean, we're, we're done December 31st.
Sure.
You gotta make sure everything's placed. So I, I strongly suggest you have the time to reach out to him and he can give you a lot of guidance. I, I, I think the pump people actually will train people for you on how to take care of those pumps and stuff like that, so. Just wanted to make sure you're aware of that and you do reach out to him. Thank you.
Wait, fade away. There?
That's it.
All of Thursday, aye.
Aye.
All right, next up is Public Works Supervisor Reinhardt.
First issue, uh, we have a petitioner, April Moore, who's the dog control officer for Ovid, would like to speak to us briefly.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for letting me come in. Better?
Yes, thank you.
Um, so I'm the DCO, the dog control officer for Covert, for Ovid and Romulus. And I am looking to try to find a location to put up a holding facility, because I get these dogs and I have nowhere to put them, literally nowhere to place these dogs. The towns are contracted with the Beverly Animal Shelter, but they are always full. I always get text messages to not bring dogs because they have no place to put them. So legally, through the state, I can only hold a dog for 24 hours and then I have to release it to the Beverly Animal Shelter. And with them not having the room for me to do that, what do I do?
That's a good one.
Yeah. So I either keep the dog, because I cannot release a dog, just let it go and do what, you know, I can't do that. So, I am looking, I have, um, looked into all of the regulations and everything, cause in December, all the regulations for shelters are changing. So they have requirements of isolation room, ventilation systems, all this stuff, which is fine, it's still doable. I have, um, applied and just received the certification for incorporation for Charlie's Dog Haven Incorporated, would be the name of it. Um, I have the support of the three towns that I work for to help do this, but I cannot find a location to put this up. I've asked the community, nobody has any ideas, nobody's come forth with anything of an existing building or a spot that I could put a building up on. So, that's why I'm here, to see if the county has anything that I could use as an existing building or a spot to put a new building up. I do have the support of the, um, shelter med program at Cornell. I work at the Cornell Animal Health Diagnostic Lab full-time, have been there 26 years, so I have a lot of support from people to help us build this shelter and get it into, I don't wanna call it a shelter, it's a holding facility. Um, if you do a SPCA or Humane Society, you have to have payroll, you have to have vets on call, all of that stuff. If you do a holding facility, you don't need that. So I can run this with maybe two volunteers and keep it small and just be able to have a place for these dogs to go, until the owners are found or I can adopt them out.
April, is, I just wanna, so everybody understands, you and I had some conversations prior to this meeting.
Yes.
And you wanna run this as your business, not necessarily a municipal type of thing?
No, I'm happy to do it as a municipal. The three towns have said that they would come together and do this as a, a multi-municipal facility, which gives us more options for grant money. So, yeah.
Would you be interested in picking up more towns, like say?
Yes, I've, I've talked to, um, the DCO in Varick and I've talked to Lowdi, but nobody has responded.
What about the north then, like Seneca Falls?
I am happy to have.
Is it too far or would, something you would do?
Well, because I don't know anybody in that area, I, I haven't reached out, I've just, just trying to keep the dogs in my area, give them somewhere. Um, I've been doing this a little over a year and the dogs in the three towns, you don't think that there's that many, but there really is a lot of dogs out there that are just left on their own, you know, the owners don't come back, whatever, you know.
I'm thinking if we're gonna do this, then you're gonna take out more towns, it has to be bigger.
It does.
You're not gonna have like two towns.
Right, but to start it, so that I can apply for grants, I need a, a 38 by 40 building. I brought a diagram of one that is completely done and this is what it takes to start it. It's 30 by, 38 by 40, it's not huge, it has the isolation room, it has the ventilation system, it has the sized kennels, um, that's all you need to start. So, and then you can expand from that if you'd like to, you know, because I would like to be able to do dog licenses out of this, because these small towns, some of them aren't open Monday through Friday, I get a lot of dogs on the weekend. I can't release them if they don't have a dog license and a rabies vaccine. So I could be able to do that so people, and we have a lot of visitors here in the summer, a lot of people from outside of our area, I still can't release them without proof of a license, and I don't have anywhere to put them. And therefore then, after 24 hours, if somebody's not opened on money, Monday to get licensed, I have to relinquish them to the Beverly Animal Shelter, which doesn't have room for them.
Are there restrictions on where it could go? And you know, I, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud here, there's nothing, I know we talked, the first thing was the old firehouse at the depot, which obviously is not feasible.
It's not gonna happen, yeah.
If the towns were looking into doing this, there'd have to be some sort of agreements in place before anybody's gonna commit.
Yes.
Money to this.
Yes.
I don't know off the top of my head, and Bob might be able to help on this one, what the county owns property-wise at the depot and where.
Right.
How much land would you be looking for?
Half an acre to an acre. I mean, depending on how many towns wanna go in, cause that depends on how many more dogs would be coming through there. Because last year with the three towns, I had 52 dogs that I placed. That's not counting dogs that people found and kept until I could find the owner. So 52 dogs in a year that needed a place to spend the night. So if I add more towns, I'm gonna need more room.
Where'd you guys get the park?
You would think, the, there's so much land and so many.
You know, where the county did something along the lines of asking someone.
Which I did try that with the community of, from where I am, but I got nobody that responded, nobody, there was a couple of people, but they just wanted me to rebuild their barn that was falling apart, so that they could, you know.
Get you out in six months.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you do enforcement too, like?
Do, yes. So, and that's the other part, I have, um, abuse cases and Beverly Animal Shelter won't take any abuse case dogs, they won't take surrenders, they will only take dogs that are found. So I have surrenders and I don't, I can't take them because I have nowhere to put them and then what do people do with these dogs they don't want?
Okay, we have any property?
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's a lot of potential of different things we could do. I would just like to have a holding facility to start with, so I have a place to put these dogs. It would be a 501(c)(3), therefore people in the community could donate and have a tax write-off. Um, it doesn't take much to get the 501(c) to do that. Um, other towns could come in, um, I can apply for grants and there's a organization called the New York State Animal Protection Federation, Libby Post runs that, and they have grant writers and they know how, they have people that build the shelter to what is needed, what the state says the requirements are.
Yeah, I, I think certainly we support the, the concept, it's just, nothing like this can happen quickly, especially if you're gonna try to bring all these towns in on it. And I gotta believe there's some legal stuff, whether the county can donate land or sell land or how.
Even if I could rent a spot.
I gotta say, could you lease it?
Do that. To who?
That's what I was.
Yeah, I called the number on the sign out there and talked to another guy named Mike, there's a lot of people named Mike in this area, a lot. But, and he's the one who told me about the building that he donated to the county for a busing system that I think was the fire.
That was a firehouse.
Yeah, but then that fell through because it's got too much wrong with it. So, but then I heard that there's a lot of places in there that have already been sold or, you know, going.
About the bunkers, they're all.
That's just a nice area, cause it's away from people, I mean, dogs bark, they make noise and, you know.
Well, a- as Bob, as said, we talked, there's a lot of places out there that already have the concrete slab down, but, but again, I could not tell you what the county owns, what they don't, I don't know for sure.
38 by 40 is, is like the bare necessity to start it.
You said 501(c)(3)?
Yep.
Thank you.
There's 512 40 by 60 concrete buildings out there on the depot.
Yeah, 512 of them.
See who owns, who owns possession, a lot of them always, Columbus, Alabamahs.
Yeah, I imagine, uh, Earl Martin owns some.
Well, before we, you know, talk this, I, I think step one is, uh, for us at this level, first find out what in fact we do own, and then to have the county attorney look into what it would take on our part to make something like this feasible.
Right, okay.
And then I think, if you wanna do this, I think you're gonna have to talk to the towns and figure out how this will come together. I just know that trying to get that many towns to come together.
Right.
And agree on something is probably gonna be a, a, a pretty good feat to make that happen.
I think it's safe to say, I know it's like, well, as we're struggling, right now, so, we, we would be looking for something different, I mean, they're not responding, they don't have the people.
No, I agree.
So I would, I, my, I, chairman, I would, so Fayette would be interested, so, I mean, if you've already got three, you know, I, I, to that, to Mike's point, set up a meeting and war ten, yeah.
Okay, all right, I have had like three meetings already, but not many people came.
Well, you know, I think the prob, you know, once this starts getting out there and people realize there's a problem, and the towns, no, you know, dog control falls under the town realm, not necessarily the county, but me speaking from the county side, I'm certainly willing to do whatever we can to make this.
Good, yeah, that would be.
Feasible down the road, I just, I just want, I want you to know that these things take time, that there's no quick answers to this.
Yeah.
And you may wanna have a conversation with a nice reporter sitting over there, she could probably help you too.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would probably be a conversation.
Yeah, and if anybody has any ideas until then of what I do with dogs when I have no place to put them, that would be great.
I, I will be in contact with you, I have your number and your email, I will let you know as soon as I know something more.
Would anybody like to see the diagram of what the basic necessities are?
Bob, can you take that?
I'm sorry. Yeah. He's real good with dogs, so I think you can just drop him off at his house.
Unfortunately, the town has a, a rule on how many you can have.
Three, and don't call over.
That's all I got.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, April.
April, April, I was just gonna say, I know, you mentioned you've had a number of meetings, but I would say, you know, at least one more meeting with the three towns you have, and then I guess, you know, any other town, including Frank and myself, so.
I would be, yeah, I'll send an email out and find a good time, make a couple different dates and see what works for everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, April. Okay. On to issue number two. Supervisors approve funding and agreement for Barton and Legudis to perform feasibility study for the new highway facility.
For it, second.
So motion in a second, is there any discussion on this?
Maybe we could make it a little bigger and put the dog thing right there.
I knew you were gonna say, I knew that was coming.
Oh, you're building, you're building.
Well, again, you know, that's, that, that's a discussion for another, but this is not gonna happen anytime, uh, soon, soon enough, I put it that way. Is there any other discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Carried. Number three, authorize an agreement with John Snyder Architects for the architectural and engineering services related to the Health and Human Services Building renovations for the Mental Health Department.
Support. Second.
Motion in a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Number four, a resolution calling on the Number four, a resolution calling on the state in New York to increase thresholds for public construction projects.
Support, second.
Okay, there's motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
What's this mean?
This came out of the NISAC conference. Uh, basically they're looking to up the amount under the Wicks law right now, depending on the size of the dollar amount of the projects you have to bid out. General contractor, heating, mechanical, all separate. They're looking to change the threshold for the dollar amount so that you can have one bid, one contract.
One prime.
Right.
I still think it's enough.
It, it probably is.
Wouldn't that be a strange concept?
Yeah.
That'd be crazy.
So we're, yeah, we're just asking the state to consider this. We'll see what happens.
Needs to be a lot higher.
Yeah.
What, what are you doing for five hundred thousand?
Right. So that's what this resolution is. We're asking the state to raise the limits. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Is there any old business for this committee? Is there any new business for Public Works? Hearing none. Public Works is adjourned. Everybody?
Thank you, sir. Next up is Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Tucker.
Not all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Carried. Is there any unfinished business? If not, any new business? If not, Criminal Safety. Adjourned. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Next up is Health and Human Services. Vice Chair Reynolds, you're in the hot seat. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Look, you're up there.
Okay, just to call Public Health and Human Services Committee together. Um, issue number one, authorize Office of Aging Annual Plan Update.
Support, second.
First a second. Anybody gonna talk on this or?
Um, so this is just, it's our Office's annual plan that we submit to the state, letting them know our plans for our services, our programs, and it is also our funding application source for all of our state and federal funding.
Any questions, ma'am? Vote. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number two, authorize and contracts for aging services.
Support, second.
So those are the contracts that are in the annual update that we just approved to get signed.
Okay. Any questions? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Senate County Board of Supervisors approves the two thousand twenty-five child, family services annual plan update for Department of Social Services and Youth Bureau.
Support, second.
Good evening. The, we had to submit a five-year plan last year for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine. Every year they want an annual plan update to see if some of the strategies and outcomes that we set forth for the five-year plan, uh, just some updates and, uh, it's a requirement on a annual basis for, and it covers child welfare, adult protective, PENS, uh, human trafficking, safe harbors, the whole gamut of child welfare and adult protective and youth bureau services.
Okay, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Or Supervisor approves the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six resource allocation plan for state aid funding for youth programs.
Support, second.
Yeah, we get annual allocation to provide youth services and it's to offset costs for some county agencies or other nonprofits to provide services for children and youth within the community. It's an annual plan. The, we got almost twelve hundred dollars more and some additional funding this year over last year. Uh, mainly it's the youth team sports, which is a new funding stream that the state created a couple of years ago. So there was a little uptick in that.
Any questions? Three none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Senate County Board of Supervisors supports NISAC two thousand twenty-five seminar seminar committee on Medicaid and Human Services Regulations Number One.
Support, second.
Yeah, so, uh, at NISAC, one of the big issues that came out of not only, uh, Medicaid and Human Services, but the, part of that is there's the Child Care Assistance Program, which the county also receives and a couple of years ago, the state increased the eligibility to three hundred percent of the federal poverty. But they also have reduced the family share percentage. Uh, years ago, the counties were allowed to set their family share percentage anywhere from ten to thirty-five percent. So the only difference is from where the individuals used to be of the federal poverty guideline to what the cost was. The last several years is part of the Child and Family Services Plan. They kept reducing what the counties could determine the family share. So one of the suggestions, because there's a whole lot of childcare that was included in the state budget, but there's already several counties at this point who have either denied funding or have created waitlist. We're monitoring monthly expenses on a, on monthly basis. Julie and her staff are keeping track. So at this point, we're okay, but we just think allowing counties to determine what the family share should be based on their county financials and where our families are at, that may be able to stretch some of the dollars, uh, not only from the state, but counties. So it, I initially received the resolution from Supervisor Partee uh, last week and we briefly spoke regarding it and so I just wanted to bring and see if this potential to allow counties to reinstitute what we feel the family share percentage should be. Uh, certainly, uh, ten to thirty-five percent used to be the standard. And now it's currently a one, one percent and we have no control. The state set one percent family share percentage. So you increase the eligibility, that may be fine, but when there's limited funding to support it, then maybe it may be prudent just to allow local counties to determine what the family share should be. So I just wanted to bring it forward with that caveat to what the NISAC, uh, resolution was. That, that was certainly one of NISAC's, uh, suggestion. There were several options regarding childcare and how to manage with the limited funds. So, I just wanted to bring it forward.
Any more questions? All in favor then?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, the last one is authorize acceptance of annual federal funding for weatherization.
Support.
Second. And we see it coming, so just pay a one we do every year, so.
Yeah, it looks good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I may be gone.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Economic Development Tourism. Mr. Trout.
No, it's all good.
You two down there, shh.
Thanks for, uh, thanks for having me. Uh, for those of you who haven't had a chance, um, to connect, my name is Bob Griffin. I'm the Regional Director of the Small Business Development Center, uh, based on Dogga Community College. I didn't know if you wanted me to go ahead and get started.
Yeah, just, um, we've got one issue before.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah.
So we'll call the Economic Development Tourism Housing Committee order. We have, uh, what issue authorizing the appointments in the Finger, for the Finger Lakes Regional Advisory Committee?
Motion.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next issue, uh, we have a presentation by Robert Griffin from the Anandaga School of Business, Small Business Development Center. Thanks, Bob, for waiting and being patient. We appreciate it.
No problem. Happy, happy to be here. Um, I started my day this morning, uh, actually doing a presentation before the Yondaga Community College Board of Trustees. Um, and they hadn't had a chance to really get an opportunity to learn more about what we've been doing, uh, and how we've been supporting small businesses throughout the region. Um, I like to kinda start off by telling just a couple of stories that help illustrate what we do. I don't have any fancy presentations. I don't have any props. Uh, but I do have lots of stories. Um, Karen, um, Deefen Duffer and Rosemary Marges, um, came to us back in twenty nineteen wanting to start a Montessori school in their community. Uh, after being teachers for thirty-plus years, uh, they reached out to our center, worked with Mark Patanzo out of our office, dealt with a lot of things regarding regulatory compliance, dealt with trying to put together a business plan, finding a location for their school, marketing, pricing, all of it. Uh, they opened up in twenty twenty-two. Um, they now have a waiting list that is a couple of years long because there was high demand in a rural community for this kind of service. Um, we work with Dr. Logan Curtis out of Watertown to, uh, who is a retired military, left Fort Drum, uh, to, and decided to stay in the community, started a dental surgical practice, again, kind of an area that's a bit underserved for this. Uh, fast forward to twenty twenty-five, he's now, um, expanded. He's got a three million dollar facility that he got bank financing for that we assisted him with. He now employs twenty people, is bringing on another surgeon and is looking to expand into other, uh, rural communities. I've got tons of stories like this. People that we've worked with, people that we've helped at all stages of the business life cycle. And for those of you that, that don't know what we do, we provide no-cost confidential to, assistance to existing and aspiring entrepreneurs. And I wanna stress that, existing and aspiring. It's not just the startups that come to us that we work with. We work with everybody and I, I really wanna emphasize that we are trying to do outreach. That's why I'm here this evening. To ask you all to make sure that as you're working with existing business owners in the communities, that they are aware that there is help available. Uh, if there's one thing that I'm certain of, it's that we are in a time of uncertainty. And part of what we do is help bring an air of calm thoughtfulness to how we approach small business problems and how we're trying to be available to support them. To kinda help put our agency into a little bit of perspective, uh, we are funded by a grant from the U.S. Small Business Administration. Uh, that grant has a match component that is provided by Anandaga Community College. This grant from the SBA is actually managed by the State University of New York. Um, Anandaga Community College is one of the sub-awardees for that grant, so they put up, uh, an amount of match to try to take advantage of those federal dollars so that we can do what we do. Uh, I have a staff of nine business advisors in our territory. We cover eight counties. We go all the way from Geneva in the west to Hamilton, the east, from Marathon in the south to Alexandria Bay in the north. We're the second largest, geographically speaking, in the state of New York. We're the second busiest center in the state of New York. Uh, we're gonna serve over fourteen hundred clients this year. Fourteen hundred clients and over a hundred of them, we're at a hundred and four now, it'll probably be a hundred and ten by the time the numbers are all counted, will be new business starts. We're gonna document about twenty-three million dollars of economic investment from the clients that we serve in the region that we operate in, which will also be number two in the state of New York. And we're competing against Manhattan, folks, so I'm kinda proud of this, right? Um, our team has over three hundred years of small business ownership, management, leadership experience. Now, why do I share all of this? Um, I share all this because I'm kinda frustrated at always being the best-kept secret. We are the best-kept secret in part because the SBA doesn't give me marketing money. Um, I use that money to invest in our staff. Our people are our most valuable resource. And we work really hard to put them out into the communities. Um, I wanna express, first of all, my gratitude to Seneca County for the partnership and the relationship that we have. Um, it is your contributions, your connections, your engagement that allow us to be present where we are. Uh, Michelle Barron is the business advisor that supports Seneca County. I also have been working with some folks out here in Seneca County. We wanna continue doing more. Um, a couple of things I wanna ask you for. Let existing businesses know that we exist to help them. It's funny, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna call anybody out, but I was talking to an existing business owner earlier and, uh, they told me that the reason they don't contact us, even though they've been in business for a long time, is because of pride. That is absolutely what happens. That is absolutely what happens and that's what I'm trying to overcome. Uh, we're going through a lot of change and transition and there are opportunities where we have tools and resources that we can leverage that can help. Um, so if you know somebody out there that might be struggling, things are uncertain, they might have a challenge that we can help them assess and understand and improve upon, um, please send them to us. Uh, we'd be happy to help. Um, a couple of things, we've had a, I think, a pretty good year in Seneca County, um, up to now. Our program year runs October one through September thirty. Uh, we've engaged, uh, with about fifty-eight clients in Seneca County. That's actually an increase over last year's number, which was at fifty-two. We've documented about a hundred and forty advising hours. That's detailed intense advising hours, not just contact, that's actual advisement. Um, nine clients went through our Business Basics course here in Seneca County, uh, that we hosted back in, uh, July. Uh, that was hosted out of the IDA building. Uh, and we documented about a hundred and thirty-seven jobs impacted. I think those numbers could be much higher. Um, and again, the secret to that success is really just letting people know that we're available. The SBDC is the single most successful entrepreneurial development program in the history of the world and I'm not just, that's not hyperbole. There's no other agency like it in existence on the planet. Uh, it's a national program. And, um, you know, we leverage the tools, resources and experience that we have to try to help as many people as we can. Uh, and I wanna make sure that the folks know in this county that we are here, we're available, um, and to reach out to us for assistance. Just a couple of other things and I'll close it out. Um, in Seneca County, we've actually been operating in New York State since nineteen eighty-four. Uh, that was the year the program, uh, was essentially founded nationally. Uh, here in Seneca County alone, we documented more than- Here in Seneca County alone, we documented more than $3 million in economic investment as a result of the work that our clients have been doing. We've served 626 clients in that time, and documented more than 8,400 hours of counseling services supplied to clients in Seneca County. So longstanding program, long track record of engagement and support, and I want to continue to do that and build on that going forward, and happy to address any questions. Yes, sir, I'd be happy to share that with you. There's a sheet going around that has our website on it as well, norcentralsbdc.org, but I can get you that contact information so that you can have that. Yep, just go to our website, there's a bigger Request Assistance button right there at the top.
If we, because we've thought about the town level on our website or Facebook, doing sort of a highlighting different businesses, and I just thought, would you have a link that you could, we could use, that like, they go to our website and then they could, you know, one way of sort of advocating and promoting?
Yeah, absolutely. You're talking about redirecting them to us, absolutely, yes, and, and we do that a lot with municipal organizations and economic development organizations where, you know, because they're not intended to be technical assistance providers.
Right, right.
So who do you call? And we really are the only resource of its kind available to Seneca County right now.
I just might need help with that.
Yep, of course, absolutely, I'll be happy to send you that.
What exactly do you do for these people? I, I'm kind of like, there's no finance, you don't give them any financial help, it's basically just like, you help them like, with keeping their books, or, I, I guess, that's what I'm kind of confused.
That's a great question. So typically, we live in this mindset, we, we help them make informed decisions and take informed action. So it's advice, counseling, tools, resources, it's market research, industry research. We can do 360-degree financial analysis for a business and compare it against their peers, so that they know how should they be performing in their industry, right? We can do cash flow projections, so if somebody's seeking financing from a bank for an expansion or a startup, we can help them do that, we can help them with business planning, lender readiness, HR issues, marketing guidance. We have 140 business advisors across the state of New York, so if there's a client in Seneca County that says, I want to start an underwater basket weaving business, I don't have anybody on my staff that can do that, but I'm sure if I reach out to the other 130 advisors across the state, I can probably find somebody that's dabbled in that somewhere. So we help people really at all stages of the business life cycle with advice, counseling, support, resources, tools. And it's not just short-term relationships. I, I started with the SBDC in 2018 down at Binghamton University. I've still got a client from down in the Binghamton Way that I still work with, owner of a bike shop who's looking to expand. And so we've been working through that process. So anything a business owner needs, we can help them talk through it, figure out solutions, how do they grow, how do they expand, if they're challenged with a problem, we can help them with the problem. We just need them to come to us so we can work with them. And we're a cheap date, we're free.
Yeah, that's the best thing, right there. Thank you, I'm gonna pass one out to every business in town.
Please do.
Yeah. Even, I think, because I've known someone, even things as simple as, hey, I need to go to the bank to get financing, what documents do I need to prepare, and how can I prepare them well?
Yep, and we can prepare them for the conversation. We can even be in the room with the bank if they would like us to, to help them with that conversation. The other thing is with state agencies, Empire State Development has their consolidated funding application that they do. We can help translate that to English, so that people can go through that process. You know, we, we can really do a lot to help people with those things. We're also doing a lot more work in DRIs, New York Forward projects, so if somebody has a private sector DRI application out there, bridge financing is a major hurdle for those businesses, and we can spend time helping to refine their plan, make it bankable, so they can go get the access to capital they need to be able to complete those projects successfully. Great question, by the way, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll state also that every, every Thursday at 10:00 a.m., they're on the one Senate call.
Yep.
And you can ask questions, get information, whatever else, make a contact.
Thank you for that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Next up. Motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 105.1H of the New York State Open Meetings Law to preview the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property or the proposed acquisition or securities or exhale of exchange of securities held by such public body, but only when publicity would substantially affect the value thereof, and invite the following individuals to attend: all the board of supervisors, the deputy county manager, and the county attorney.
Second, second. No action is expected, correct? All right, and we can do it right here, since it's the, yes, we'll do it right here, so. All, wait a minute, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Yes, could you please find another place to be, yes?
He said, "Thank you very much." Better close this meeting, don't they?